Alright, everyone, we're gonna get the meeting started. I'd like to announce the purpose of the executive session. I'd like to give my mark. Thank you very much. Our next motion to approve the expenditures of the period ending June 30th. You have a motion? Second?
Second.
Questions?
Do you have a question?
Right ahead, Mr. Speaker.
The expenditure to Gothert Greenwood was, uh, it was over a thousand dollars. I don't remember what it was exactly, fourteen hundred perhaps. Um, the, did, and it has been that way consistently, um, several months in a row. Has the borough been getting preapproval from the developer? Because that's part of the, uh, 2015 amendment to the apartment park agreement of sale. It says that the, uh, the developer will pay the legal fees but only upon preapproval, if it's over a thousand dollars. So, my question is, did we get preapproval for that?
Not for this expenditure. I've gotten not for the first one and not for this one. And I think we need to pay two that have been a little over a thousand, maybe eleven hundred, twelve hundred, uh, but not for these two.
So she's been telling everyone, we've had no problem in paying?
Well, two of them we paid. The agreement states that she'll pay a thousand dollars per month, and if it's over that, we need preapproval for two. And two bills came late. I didn't get preapproval. We wound up paying two over, probably dollars.
The overage?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, motion second all in favor? Posed?
I oppose.
Okay, motion carries. Sworn in. Um, approval of Borough Council miss for June 22nd. We have a motion?
No.
You have a second?
Second.
Questions?
Uh, I do have a question on it. It, um, in the, talking about the conditional use hearing, um, it asked if there were comments from the citizens and the comments were heard. Um, did, do we need to put in, it doesn't have to be in the minutes as far as the names of the people who, you know, s- s- the, the people commented but they actually were sworn in. Does their name have to be in the minutes or, or not? I don't know that.
I think that would be in the transcript.
It's in the transcript.
In the transcript.
Of conditional use?
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, how some of the people wanted to talk and so they were sworn in and I, I just wasn't sure. It's just, I have no idea. So it's just a question of if, if, because they were sworn in, if their names need to be in the minutes, then I'm just bringing that up in case things need to be put in.
We never had a test.
Once, I, I, and once we start the transcripts, we usually, the transcripts reflect exactly the way the meeting went. And then we go back after, after the script. Alright, any other questions? Motion second all in favor? Posed? Motion carries. Thank you everyone. Citizens to be heard? You have any citizens who want to come up? Step right up to podium, name and address please. Alright, do you need a hand with that now?
Bobby J. Brunel, 302 Northlake Drive. Uh, so it says on the agenda that the billboard's deferred. Usually that means it's put off till a later date, is that correct? Or are we gonna talk about that tonight?
I don't believe we have anything new to add tonight. It's one in progress.
We did. From the last meeting, we were going to...
To what?
We were going to appoint...
You already did.
Well, no, we, we did. That's not finished, so we don't have anything new to add tonight about that. That's still in, in the works.
From our last executive session?
Yeah, Andy, we all agree on something, right? You agree on it?
We all, we all agreed that we were going to, to reach out. I didn't know that...
Steve is handling it. He's working out that it's a legal question that we handle at the executive session. Okay? Tell him at this point, I don't have nothing new to add.
Okay. So, did anyone get a chance to see Andy Dinaman's Capitol update show?
Yes.
How many on council viewed that? No one else?
Well, I haven't had the time, Bobby.
Okay, I'm just asking.
I have it in my bag.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I can say, yeah, but we, we did talk to the center on Sunday.
Oh, I just urge council to see that before, you know, because that gives you a lot of insight as to what he's doing. Okay, so residents vote for council. Council is to represent citizens in every way, health, safety, and protection. Council instructs staff, Sullins, Yuhas, and Thompson, what to do. But it seems completely opposite and residents are the bottom feeders in your eyes. Staff and Sullin', no, staff of Sullins and Thompson never checked into Catalyst, and if they did, I'll get to that later. Council never looked into Catalyst Bartkowski. You probably never went to Keen's yourself to see the impact of our neighborhood. You over and over again say you relied on experts and sworn testimony. The residents want to see and hear the expert opinion of another solicitor. You should all vote yes to that, and when hiring a new solicitor, no one on this council should try to persuade that newly appointed solicitor not to take action. We were never to see the sign, and I don't want to see the sign at all, nothing. It is not the residents' problem that staff and council did not do your homework in checking out Catalyst. Residents will not pay for your mistakes and failures. Catalyst lied under oath, and therefore there should be no sign. In fact, Mark Thompson and Tom Yuhas could have taken action from the start and a cease and desist, and Catalyst could have paid fines. Everyone is so afraid of legal battles with Catalyst. When Catalyst is absolutely wrong about, wrong, what about the legal battles you will have with residents who bring suits against you? Senator Dinaman is trying to pass state legislature, and I know he wants action for downtown residents. He asked me if I would be okay with the westbound side of the sign being shut off at six o'clock. I told him that would be giving in, and we don't want to see the sign at all. He expects all of you to do the right thing for the residents and to work as hard as he is against the billboard. A billboard should never shine in or above a residential community, and trees are not the answer, but going up against Catalyst is. Chip, you laughed at me at the first council meeting I ever came to when I said I wanted the sign down. It went up fast, and it can come down fast. I met Jack London at Good Neighbor Day. He's running for state senate. I asked him about his advertising on the sign, and he gets that for free. He told me that. Um, Republicans usually get their ads for free. And he also told me that I should enjoy seeing his face coming in my window. No vote for you, Jack. Catalyst is all about greed and putting money into pockets. I hope that hasn't happened here with council and staff. Residents, though, can't help but wonder, since staff and council are pro-Catalyst and not for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you, Bobby.
Any other citizens? Sure, step right up. Name and address, please.
Catherine Highsire.
Alright, Rachel, come up, so she can get it. I'm sorry. It's kinda hard. She, she's, if you could come up to podium, it's kinda...
Catherine Highsire, 210 Brandywine Avenue, downtown.
Thank you.
We were told in the last meeting to get petition of signatures for all the residents on Jefferson Avenue. We got all of the two.
Great. Good.
So, where do we...
The borough manager, we appreciate it. And you could have dropped it off. You wouldn't have had to come to the meeting.
Did you make a copy? Did you make a copy for yourself first?
No, I didn't make a copy.
It's, it's a good answer, the borough manager.
Well, no, she'll wanna get a copy for her records.
Thanks, yeah.
Did you wanna get a copy?
Thank you very much.
We can make, I can drop it off on my way home, actually.
We'll, we'll catch you, son, for sure.
What is the, what is the, um, parti- the purpose of the petition? Can you, can, can you summarize it for us?
Um, it was for the parking on 157 Jefferson Avenue.
The street parking residence?
There's ten houses above, um, 100 block, I believe. There's only literally parking for ten houses. On the other end, there, you can probably park for twenty houses, but in front of that one p- spot, you can't park on both sides of the borough, 'cause they built the new, um, developments over there.
Great job.
Thank you. Any other citizens? Come on up, Jay.
I think it's funny, the picture that captured Howard is, is, uh, there seems to be a raise from heaven coming back behind him.
I like that.
You'll enjoy that picture.
Yeah, it is.
Um, quick, it, it's very simple. Jamie Bruton, 403 Lancaster Avenue. Um, you obviously have the, uh, conditional use coming up and the decision to be made, and I would just, uh, reiterate, um, that on my time on council, when someone would go through a conditional process or conditional use, there were usually something that, that some conditions tied to the project. And last week, we talked, two weeks ago, we talked about, uh, the Green Street Muse Project and how, and Chip, you pointed out, well, that was in a flood plain. We did require the developer to basically redo the stormwater infrastructure along Jefferson Avenue, and it did help the project. Um, tonight, I'm just reiterating that, that this project happens to be right in front of a really difficult intersection, um, whether, and it was not, you know, whether this project causes little or a lot of difficulty at that intersection, it's going to make some impact. You will all have that decision as to what will be required. Typically, what would be required would be a traffic study, paid for by the developer, and then improvements that could be recommended from that would also be somehow either subsidized or paid for by the developer.
Jamie, if I could add?
Chip, I'm, I'm talking, it's my time.
You're telling council what, how to run the meeting?
No, I'm not. I'm actually going ahead and bringing up point.
Really? Don't go ahead, I'll comment afterwards.
That's fine. This is my moment.
I'd like to hear what he says.
Thank you very much. So, I'm just saying, my time on council, this is what happened. I understand we want to have development town. I'm not trying to stop it. I think, as Dr. Carter said when he met with me, and yes, I did ask, hey, what about an easement? Is it possible to work together? Nothing hang, nothing came of that? No big deal. Looking at this project, though, you as ta- as, as council members do have to, you owe it to yourself to take some time, look at the project, really evaluate what can and cannot be done, talk to your council for the health, welfare, and safety of the community. And that intersection is a dangerous intersection. Just so happens that Dr. Carter's property is directly smacked across from it, just like Sarah Peck's project is right in the middle of a flood plain. I don't see much difference. I think you owe it to yourself to go through and evaluate what can be done and what's fair and reasonable. And leave it at that.
Should I ask?
So you may not have to make a decision tonight.
Sure, those three guys will get a chance.
You might can make, go ahead and think about it further on down the line and say, let's reevaluate this and come up with a real list of conditions and say, okay, this is what will work for the community, both from your perspective as well as from the developer's perspective, that you can go ahead and have something thrive within the borough. Once again, I'm not trying to stop it. I'm just saying, evaluate it carefully before you just go ahead and say yes, because this is going to be the last time, really, that council goes ahead. I've been on your seat for 12 years. I know what it's like. Alright, and I learned too. It took me a while to catch up and get caught up to speed. I watch each call-in, they do a great job. Alright, when developers come into his call-in, guess where it goes? Really thoroughly reviewed with the planning commission, and then it comes before council. This time, what happened was they went to the planning commission, and the point, first point they asked was like, well, what does Jamie Bruton think? Because they're all my friends on the planning commission. And developers said, oh, he likes the project. It was true. I liked the project. But I never thought council would simply go ahead and not have any conditions associated with it since it was going through conditional use. Alright? You have an opportunity to go ahead and improve the borough. Take advantage of it. Take your time. It's not gonna break the, anybody's bank. Just take your time. You have the right to slow it down a little bit. And then you can make the choice and say, hey, I think this is good, and move forward. That's all.
Alright. I just wanna ask a quick question.
Yeah.
Sure, cover that.
Um, do you remember any communication with Penn Dodd on crosswalk, a pedestrian crosswalk right there?
Alex, it's, well, I do know there's one, it's a nice one. They put in a decent one, but I do know, like, yeah, fresh paint and maybe some better signage. There are two kids that stick out in my mind. One kid named Colin and Logan. It's a single mom, and they run all over the neighborhood. They're riding down the street on some, what is that called? Uh, razor. They're on Lancaster freaking Avenue, okay? My kids are in the house. These kids are on Lancaster Avenue waving at trucks. Something needs to be done to slow it down. I know we can't stop kids from coming out and playing. It's dangerous. But someone's gonna get, someone's gonna get it, alright? Two people have already died at that intersection. If you have a shot at making some improvement, yeah, fine, make it. If not, that's okay too. But just remember, you don't have to make a decision quickly, and for the health, welfare, and safety of the community, you can hold these people a little bit accountable, saying, let's, let's improve the community. That's all.
Want to add a question?
Yeah, uh, I think, just having talked with people over at council meetings, because I have people who agree. Um, I reached, I called you last week to get your opinion on this, and I, I called you on the phone just to get your input on this so that I can go back to council. I left a voicemail last week, I think the day after you came to council. So I just want, you don't know, maybe you missed that voicemail.
I, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just wanted you to know, I did reach out.
Because I've had, talked to Pat and Phil and two others.
And counsel council.
Yeah, so, uh, I think everyone agrees we want to improve that intersection. It's, uh, how do we keep the culture when we get people to invest? Alright.
No, Josh, go ahead, keep going. I'm sorry. Um, my time is up, that's all.
Are they have a questions?
I would, I would like to ask, because I...
Josh, you know, I didn't know you did that, Josh.
It's fine, it's fine. Alright. Those cake downstairs.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, why?
Um, I do, I do, um, I hope for your opinion. I think I value, I value your input, and, um, I've, of course, I've seen you with conditional use hearings, and I, um, you're very good, very good. I was, you know, curious about your, your whole, um, opinion of the project. You like it?
Doctor Ricardo has a decent project, and he's put a well thought out plan. I just think it needs to be, people really need to think about what that's going to do to that community. Come to my backyard. I encourage all of you to stop by. I've had a couple council members do that. And look at it. Look at what it's going to do. You have a building that's bigger than Mrs. Lehrer's property going into that backyard. Imagine that. And I saw that up here. That was pretty packed, like, wow, it's a big building. When I look out my back window in the morning and have coffee right now, I'm looking at a really big, nice oak tree and backyard and the field, and it'll all change. I understand that. I'm not stopping that. But you have a, you have the ability to go ahead and say, let's make this really good. And think about it, because this borough is full of projects that were, what happened like on Manor Avenue in Pennsylvania, that, that property on St. Joe's, where all the backs of the properties are facing the street? I, you know, none of us were here when that happened, but I'm like, wow, that was just, someone wasn't thinking. Because it really looks like not a good project. You know, but then the flip side is you've got the Race Street project. That's a really beautiful project. Nice homes, you've got the Greek Revival building, which, I'm not sure if it's Greek Revival, but it's nice. You know, that's a really nice project. Green Street Muse is a nice project. Take your time, that's all.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna jump, we're opening more citizens. I'm sorry. Come on up. I'm gonna, your face, we haven't seen you.
Hi, I'm Ted, so, how about you?
Alright, thank you.
Um, my name's Paige Mallard. I live at 137 Bradford Avenue, giving to her old, and I'm curious to know how the flood control project is coming along.
Man, they did.
Man, I saw him.
Yeah, I mean, I think so.
They, uh, just finished the survey information, field surveyors, and, uh, will be proceeding to design next week. Um, yeah, so we're hoping to get a bid this year yet.
For sure, or no?
For property.
Bid this year, you know. I don't construct it this year, but I have the latest, thank you.
Okay, we're trying, man. We're trying.
Thanks, guys.
We didn't give up, we're trying.
Okay. I thought I'd better stop getting in check.
We, we won't quit. Yeah, Jenny, come on up.
Happy birthday, Jeff.
Happy birthday.
She's four hundred and eight. I'm sorry, Jenny, I feel like that.
I would just like to back Jamie. Jamie speaks it very well. I'm not very good at that, but I too am very concerned about the traffic. I live one block back. We have all those school buses coming to turn, and as he said, we've had two deaths there, not because of Dr. Ricardo's thing, but it's a dangerous intersection, and it is gonna be a big moving, uh, in there, and it isn't a risk, right, so...
Very certain, right? We were so...
We did, with some conditions, and one of it was the traffic study. And I would like to see that.
But they're still deciding on how to save the traffic, like, I don't know what they want.
I don't know, but it is, and I back Jamie for everything he said here.
Thank you, Jenny. Alright, anyone else?
Alright.
Okay, we're gonna move on. We'll jump around, um, let's do a conditional use hearing because we have this one made here. So, Mark, if you'd like to do, uh, Mars Realty...
I want your permission, Mr. Brunel. Are we going to do downtown after all this evening? We're, we're doing the conditional...
Yeah, right now, I'm, I jumped around, we'll generally have to, uh, agree.
Under the...
I'll get to it, thank you. Alright, Mark, over there, please.
I have a question.
We're doing the Mars Realty conditional use hearing, being a little apart.
Okay, we're gonna open the hearing for the applicant, Mars Realty Advisors. Uh, in accordance with the terms of section 287, 107G, the downtown borough zoning ordinance, the applicant requests approval for a fee in lieu of parking for two spaces under that provision. Uh, the property is at 107 East Lancaster Avenue. Um, the notice indicated it is in C1 zoning district, it's actually located in the C2 zoning district. I wanna make a note for the record of that. Uh, this is a conditional use hearing under the provisions of the municipality's planning code, and since it's a hearing, we're gonna have exhibits. Mark, uh, for the borough, first exhibit is the application for conditional use, which was received by the borough on June 21st, 2016, of exhibit B1. A memo from Tom Yuhas, the zoning officer analyzing the request, is exhibit B2. Uh, the affidavit of publication of the public notice in the Daily Global News is exhibit B3. Uh, exhibit B4 is a certification of mailings of that notice to individuals within, I think it's 150 feet of the applicant's property. Uh, and B5 is a certificate of posting of the property with the notice. Before we start the testimony, I'd like to ask if anyone would like to be made a party to the hearing. Uh, party status is reserved for individuals that have, um, special relationship to the property, such as there being adjacent property or a property in the vicinity. Uh, you don't have to be a party to ask questions or make statements. You would simply have an opportunity to be provided with the ultimate decision that Borough Council renders and appeal that decision if you weren't satisfied with it. So with that, would anyone like to request party status? Okay, let the record reflect it. I don't see anyone making that request.
Good, thank you.
Um, with that, is the applicant present? Sir, um, do you have anything you want to present in behalf of, of the application?
Uh, no.
If you could just state your name for the record first.
Yeah, do you want to come up here?
Sure. Whatever's getting to you.
Please.
And just keep in mind, if you want to provide any testimony, um, of what is being sworn in, so...
Sure, um, my name's Greg Morris from Mars Realty.
Greg Morris?
Greg, the P O P G. And the property involved here is one of seven East Lancaster Avenue. Currently a vacant store with a couple of vacant apartments.
Why don't, before you start getting into the testimony, why don't you...
Do you have a question? If somebody's for a, or firm, the testimony you're not giving will be mutual, and we'll chip in on that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I do have some exhibits, but I believe Tom Yuhas has already, uh, spread them around or taught people, I'm not sure, but they're, what we're simply trying to do, um, is take an existing shell within the building that hasn't been used or anything for years. It's on the second floor of the building, and I'm just trying to utilize it consistent with all the other uses along the street, which is a part. And Tom and I reviewed the zoning book, uh, the section that the gentleman read was correct, 287, 137. Uh, Tom Yuhas believes that it does benefit the public welfare, there's no safety issues, hazards, no impact on sewers or water or anything. It's simply taking a shell that's already there on the second floor without changing any footprints or anything, just making it a part of the avenue, consistent with the rest of the street on the second floor.
And right now, it's just empty space, you're saying?
Correct.
Council, quickly, we kind of dragged everything through, we're trying to put it along fine, if you don't have a piece of the order, I'm just, I'm sorry. If you have anything else to...
Bad? Uh, no, if anyone has any question, I'd be happy to answer them. There's really not anything complicated about it, it's, um...
And you recommend, Tom? Tom, you were down there and, and checked everything out, and everything is...
Yes, and I issued a letter on, uh, date of June 20th, 2016.
Okay, your recommendation, um, he's here today in a fee in lieu of, that's the only, the only thing he really needs is to keep moving parking.
That is correct.
So, you're, you're here today, and how many spots would that be, if you don't want to that total conflict?
Two spaces, and according to the ordinance, the current, um, rate as adopted by council is 2,500, so the fee in lieu of would be $5,000 more.
That's where we have the place to encourage stuff in the business that's, that's business nerd. And you're, you're, you have no problem, correct?
Yeah.
Mark?
Could you just describe the location of the building, just so that we're clear on the record?
Certainly, it's the floor of Wallace and 30, but officially 107 East Lancaster Avenue.
Okay. Did you have any exhibits that you wanted to put in the record?
Uh, I don't know if Tom did that already. I just have, um, an aerial photo and, uh, have to give it to you.
Sure, that's fine. Why don't we just mark them for the record?
Okay.
And then, Mark, the council will ask questions, we'll be on council. If you all have any questions, we'll...
I'm just gonna mark this as exhibit A1, and it's aerial, um, I guess the property, I think, is in red. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Anything else?
No, um, not complicated matter, but it's just the process. It's pretty straightforward, as the council, start down, go, question?
Like you said, it's pretty straightforward.
Yes, a couple more, Paul, just a minute. Tom?
I think it's a great use of the empty space, so, you missed a lot.
Which one?
Yeah, a few more. Uh, how many bedrooms is the apartment?
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms. Uh, do you have any parking outside at all, or is it, you just go through the fee and the process?
Uh, actually, you just struck me to think of something.
It's complicated.
This is a property that has the parking lot in the rear, but I'm not sure what you call it. What's that lot called, Tom?
It's the Mill Road Parking Lot.
That was part of this property in the past. And over the years, the town had to purchase that and took the parking away from the property. So there's parking behind us, but it's public. And so that was sort of, I guess, the evolution of the town to buy the property and changing the parking of the property to public. Then with the code, it created a small conflict. But the code has a resolution there to pay the fee, which you have to do to get the property going again and it's sitting there vacant. But there should be no noticeable difference with two cars in that parking lot.
So how would the residents of his apartment utilize the Milltown parking? The Milltown Road, Mill Road Parking Lot?
You're asking me?
I'm asking you, Tom, sorry.
Excuse me, does Tommy to be sworn in in order to be answering for testimony? I'm just asking.
Not if he's just answering questions. I mean, if he wants to be sworn in and you want his statements to be considered evidence.
I don't need it as evidence. Tom, what, uh, how would they go about utilizing that lot?
They have to pay for parking, just like any other resident. Right now, last time I checked, there is available parking with the Borough Parking Program of one space per address. So he could actually qualify for three spaces for apartments and one space for business or pay parking per, on an annual basis and add that to his leases.
Back in the back lot?
In the back lot.
We have, we have separate lots that's for that, that they can buy spots.
I understand. And you understand that as well, right?
Yes.
All right, second thing is, what is the status that you, you knows on that one of seven?
We're working with him now to get building permits to upgrade the building, which is a good thing. And he's gonna actually improve the inside section better quality than they are now for all the apartments, as well as the brand new one. And he's gonna improve the fire rating of the entire building. So that's all good stuff.
All right, and you have no issues fulfilling the Borough Use Not Conceded Permit requirements for that one of seven?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Have that brush yourself, Paul. Yeah?
So there's no business in the lot, current. Two apartments right now and one for third.
Correct.
Total bedrooms? Just go through.
In all three apartments, it'd be five. Two, two isn't one.
Anything else, Tom?
Yeah?
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm a little confused. You currently have three, uh, four other apartments?
Yeah, this particular building is one of seven and it has two apartments currently.
Okay.
And for whatever reason, the owner in the past traded a shell inside the building and never finished it. It's hardly any reasonable explanation.
It's hardly...
And this is just two of seven, uh, one of, one of...
One of seven.
This is just one of sevens, but there's also one of nine and one of, one eleven. Do one of nine and one eleven, they have apartments as well that are currently occupied?
Correct.
Okay, I wasn't sure if they're... Okay, then, and the businesses also at one of seven, nine and eleven, those, I don't know if they're gonna occupy right now?
They are, they are. They are. Our new apartment shop, Lars.
Oh, okay. All right, so my question is, as far as current parking for the businesses that are there and the two apartments that are there, do you have adequate parking for all of them or those also, were those also a fee in lieu situation?
Are we just going with this?
Before you answer that, we're talking about the apartments we're here at, Mark. Can you please, let's keep it alive. We're not going through all his properties, asking him about his rentals, his businesses. Right now, he's come in, he's come in and asked for acceptance of a fee in lieu of for two parking spots. And that's what we're considering. So please keep your questions to that.
Okay, for the two parking spots. And then you have a business below. Your business below has adequate parking already?
Yes, it's public, but it's there.
Oh, but it's public, so you had to provide a fee for that? Can you add that?
No, I just got involved in private in the recent months, so...
They're all grand public, they're all businesses.
It's all sitting there for literally 100 years. Just trying to take a shell and use it.
Yeah, and that's, and that's good, that's great. I'm just concerned about the parking. All right, so I'd like to ask, uh, Tom Yuhas some questions about his parking. Since, since you might not be able to answer this right now. The parking that's there in Mill Alley, is this part of the parking that, that George always actually talked about? Where it used to be on the business side of Mill Alley and then it was with the old main street, it was then put over to the other side of Mill Alley? And is this...
I believe that's a different issue than he's talking about. He's talking about the parking that used to be along the road, on the way down. This is one parking lot that the redevelopment authority years ago took three parcels from three property owners, one of which is the one that's subject to this application. They made it one more usable parking lot. It's got three private little strips, no room to maneuver. They merged off and he took it from the owners.
Tom, if you can, we're way off key here. We're talking about the two things. We're not talking about parking up the street, whatever. He's coming here for two, a fee in lieu of once it pays two spots.
I'm trying to understand the whole parking situation. I need to understand the particular picture.
If we can kind of bring it into the two spots and let's address it for those two spots as at all possible, please. Thank you. Any more questions on, on the, the two spots that he's looking for to come in for a fee in lieu of?
Where are those, if you could, he's getting the fee in lieu, that's fine. He's paying the fee in lieu. Where will the people physically park?
Tom already...
No, no, I'm not asking you, Mr. President. I'm asking the applicant or I'm asking Tony Yuhas.
Well, anyone can ask.
No, I'm not asking you, Mr. Mayor. I'm asking you.
Let's make some order here. Excuse me, Tom, please, again, tell her where there's available parking spots. You did it once, but do it again. Explain to her about the back parking lot where you could buy spots.
The Borough, the Borough has an ordinance now that allows him to purchase one parking space per each unit. And there are spaces available right now for him to do that. So if he gets approval tonight, he can have those spaces tomorrow.
In that lot you're talking about that was created by the...
For, yeah, for the building.
Thank you for answering my question.
Any other questions? All right, citizens, anybody got a question? All right, Mark, you...
Do you have anything further you want to add?
No, sir.
Okay. With that, we'll conclude the hearing. Borough Council has 45 days to render a written decision on the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, you want to get out of here? We're about to jump ahead, we're about to look to, back to the third. Steve, the downtown outdoor, see, we're not ready to drop that tonight. The next thing, we have a conditional use order decision, Dr. Ricardo office.
The downtown, we do have...
Excuse me, office building to, to write a motion to approve it.
Can I ask a question, please?
Sorry, yes, you'll be able to do that.
Yes, I'd like to approve the...
Make a motion to approve?
I've made motion to approve the, um, the conditional use order decision for Mr. Dr. Ricardo, because the medical office building with the additional stipulation that we have right turn only exits lanes. And the current, oh, that's a... So it has, right in the plus side.
We have a second?
Second.
A motion to second, we have questions, Pat, we have a question. We can start with you.
On the initial update that we received, at least the conditions that we are asking to be put in, whether approved?
We didn't add any conditions. Are there any conditions that are there or the two, or the... We talked about that in the...
I understand, but I would like to ask that these conditions be given approval for our vote. Is that possible to do?
Mark, you answer some of those questions and whatever, some of the additions that we went over and...
The one proposed condition was the right in, right out, that was in the motion. The other condition concerning the amount, these are $20,000 that would be the fee in lieu.
Correct.
The, uh, there was discussion of funding a traffic study, that that study being funded at redevelopment.
Correct.
Wasn't necessarily needed to be a condition at this point. That's gonna be a requirement for the application.
Thank you.
Could you say that again? That's not a condition, that's a required, I couldn't hear you. Required, that'd be paper traffic study and this would be my development process?
Right, well, the reason for a conditional use would be to bring the application within the standards that are in the zoning ordinance. And this is a standard that's outside the zoning ordinance that they're gonna have to comply with anyway. So it doesn't necessarily need to be a condition in order for that traffic study to be something that the applicant would need to put forward.
We actually, whatever it is, an executive session.
I wasn't there for that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Didn't realize it was a six.
I'm sorry, you missed it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was a six, I didn't realize it was a six.
Those are the only conditions that...
I just, I just expressed, as I did when we had the hearing, that that is a very dangerous area, I believe, with cars coming out from East Ward, from the bridge, from Almodores. I'm also concerned that the crosswalk, which I thought was a crosswalk, is not really a crosswalk and is not approved by PennDOT. And that's something that I think we need to have looked at. Not against the medical office building, but I just have some real concerns with that area. I don't know what we do about it.
So, Mark, just to make sure I understand what you're saying. So are land development ordinance requires a traffic study later segment?
For the use.
I want to hear you say it, for the use?
For the use.
So a medical office building requires a traffic study at the land development stage?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this one? Sure, Andy, right there.
Do these guys have questions?
No, I think they're ready. Go ahead. Okay, we'll come back.
I agree with, with Pat. I think that we should add a condition that as far as the traffic study, then you can tell me if this is covered in the subdivision land development process, that the applicant would pay for a traffic study, particularly with PennDOT, to find out PennDOT's requirements. But I would like to add in the condition that the applicant would contribute up to $10,000 for any, any recommendations from PennDOT as far as traffic improvements in that area. So that's a very small amount of money, really, in the whole scheme of things. But that the, that the, that the applicant, if there, if there are requirements from PennDOT or any upgrades or suggestions that will benefit the health, safety, welfare of the people in that area that come back from that traffic study, that the, that the applicant would contribute any contribution towards, so we can implement those recommendations.
That's a land development, right, Mark? That's also a concern, is that?
Well, I think the condition now would be to say that we wanted to contribute to any, um, any...
Right now, there's no proposed improvements.
Right, there is no improvements and it goes in front, so really, to put stuff on that doesn't happen, it's not even happening, it may not happen, so...
It has to happen. If you have to do a traffic study, then I don't see why we can't say, all right, well then we could say, have the applicant pay money towards the improvements or towards the parking fund or something.
It won't be passed if it doesn't, right? It won't be passed, Anthony. If they're asking, they're not, they're not approved, it won't be passed.
No, I'm talking about recommendations for safety, not, not the, not the minimum to meet the requirements, but any recommendations for safety for that intersection. And so if a traffic study comes back with some recommendation, PennDOT, well, PennDOT has to approve the recommendations. So if recommendations are made as a result of the traffic study, PennDOT approves those recommendations, then I would say that we, and the applicant should make a contribution towards those recommendations.
Now, that, that could be determined at land development after the traffic study's done based on what that traffic study reveals.
They can oppose...
You could still place that requirement as a condition of approval of land development.
But does it come back?
Right now, if we were to just take a number out of the air or out of anything in the ordinance, we don't necessarily have anything in the conditional use standards that would support exacting a $10,000, you know, fee or something. We're not sure what the improvement would necessarily be.
Will we put in here that we would, after, have the traffic study approved by PennDOT and that we would, will we put in here that we would expect a contribution if we don't put an amount? But, but the applicant will pay contribution towards any recommendations that are gonna come out in the subdivision land development process?
I mean, ask them, no, you can't ask them.
Again, it's, it's far in the future to the point where we're not sure what the issue is. But once that traffic study's done at redevelopment, then we can have a better, we can have a better understanding of what the issue is.
All right. And then the other thing that, because I agree with Pat, it has to be, it has to be addressed and it has to be taken care of and it shouldn't all be on the shoulders of the Borough. The other one is as far as the stormwater management, because I don't see anything in here that addresses that. So I was thinking about, they're talking about they're gonna put in the stormwater management underground and it'll process all the water. I would like to see as a condition, and, again, this is as far as subdivision land development, I would like to be able to have, to have them put a berm in, that just a, that they have to put a berm on the property to keep, make sure all that water does not flow off of the property at all. That it definitely stays contained on the property.
Tom, can I answer that question because...
It's a little...
What was that question? I didn't hear a question.
It was your question.
That's the structure.
Hey, guys, okay, let's go get here. If you want, we went through this before. Tom, you explained that the stormwater control is very stringent and they're gonna have to meet certain specifications to be able to do it. Am I correct? They're very hard on it now. They're gonna have to contain all that water.
Mr. President, I'm just, why are you arguing with me? Everything I'm trying to ask...
Excuse me, I'm talking now. The southern law order and the flood order has to be contained on the property by the new, whatever, what's that thing we have? What is it, Tom?
Legislation is Act 167.
Can you explain that?
They have a standalone ordinance for stormwater management, which I believe is Chapter 246. And that does require that they evaluate how much water comes on and off the property and that they do not increase any water off the property. And they actually have to over-control some of the water.
And there'll be a plan, there'll be a plan drawn out that will meet all those specifications.
And I know that all those specifications are done by their experts.
Andy, do you have another question?
If all of those things are done by their experts, they come up with their numbers. I understand that very, very well. What I'm saying is that I still think in addition to that, because their experts are often not entirely accurate, that I would like to see a small, it's not, it's not, doesn't have to be much, but just a little bit of a berm, a little bit of a rise at the edge of the property so that if the water does not go down to the lower property, which is St. James Place, to control their runoff.
That, that can easily be addressed at the planning level. Because that's when they show the plans and they show how much may or may not get out of the property. The neighbors can have their... I'm sure the applicant will do what they're sent.
Because that doesn't...
I think they require it.
That doesn't make a big, that's not a big cost involved in that, but it could have a really big impact.
Those kind of details happen at the land development.
We have a motion to second, it's for a hall favor.
Whoa.
Opposed?
You know what, I'm opposing. I'm just gonna oppose, because I just, I don't vote for it.
No?
I'm opposed.
Okay, we have one, two, three, four, four to two. Motion carries with you. You're building it up. All right, everyone, next we're gonna go over to, we're gonna go down to new business, we're gonna do East County Township. We're gonna jump down, we're down to East County zoning. Steve, you wanna handle that?
I can, I put in your package and just as a matter of record, East County is redoing their zoning map. And the way I read it, they're doing some pedestrian trail improvements, open space and things like that. And whenever they do a zoning map change, they have to send notifications to them, joining this outing for your review. I didn't see anything that jumped out of me, it is numbers to the Borough, so it's just a notification, but you do have... 45 days, I believe, to appeal that zoning map, because they just come up with, so it's just a 45 day notification.
Well, we, we may see, may see, Joel, so you can, will you be talking about this at your next supervisor's meeting?
Yes, we've already, we've already went through it, it's not difficult. So we've already, we just have to give the notice now.
I see. So does the municipality weigh in, or is this just a notification?
Basically a notification.
And I'm, and I'm sorry, Joel, you're gonna have to come up, I'm sorry, wait, wait.
I don't have any more questions, Mark.
I'm sorry, please, thank you, Joel. You know I'm going through. Thank you. Okay, any more questions on this? Steve, um, they just...
That's it, once you guys saw anything that I can relate to, then I have any concerns, but the FTC does require...
The only thing was Tom's letter with Chester Valley Trail.
Sorry, Steve, you were... The planning commission, the planning commission would need the plan. And we're also working with the tribal, just let me clarify, this is a zoning map. This is a official map, which is a supplement to the legislation for the town. It goes in conjunction with their legislation to regulate property. And the Borough has 45 days to, the planning commission had one comment, and that was that the Tressel Bridge area trail extension, they're under 21, and they're not shown on the local East County township map. So we wanted to relay that, but the direction is to you from the municipality planning community to provide comments within 45 days of receipt of your notice from the, that you've been to the township. So that was the one comment the planning commission had. If you're okay with that, we'll forward it to East County.
Well, it's not accurate, I don't know, it'd be, uh... And one of the, it's not labeled as far as the one part over in the Carter Park area, it's not labeled. But it's already approved, so...
So do we need to take a vote to say...
No, we're not doing anything. Steve, that's just presentation. Will I think you have anything you want changed in this county, if we're gonna go down this county? Okay, all righty.
Just a real question. Tom, do you agree with the planning commission's recommendation?
Yes.
Can we, do we need a consensus or...
If you're a fan, I'll forward this to East County right now.
Hannah told you.
All right, you're next.
And if we're not okay, are you saying we're already similar to them or not?
It's only advisory, they, they're required to notify you, they're not required to act on your suggestions.
Thank you. All right, next we have the Parks and Rec Commission, motion to appoint, I'm gonna let, no, okay, I'm...
Motion to appoint Ms. Ashley Orr to the Parks and Rec Commission.
We have it.
Second?
Parks?
Second?
Well...
Motion to second, and this is, this is coming up the recommendation of the board.
Yes.
They, they live the meanings, whatever, so this isn't just someone coming up the street, this is someone that you know and you want to...
Correct.
She's already been very busy helping herself.
Is Ashley, is Ashley here? Oh, the motion's second.
The motion's second, all favor?
No, 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 no question. Is Ashley here? Has Borough Council met her?
Yes.
No, has Borough Council? No.
Have you interviewed?
No.
Have I, have you?
The prior applicants all had to be interviewed by the council.
That has never happened.
That's it, it's...
We've never interviewed, Borough Council's never interviewed, ever.
You can't make rules up if you got...
Yes, you did.
Make your own rules up if you know.
Really?
No, 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 excuse me, no, excuse me.
Were you asking or telling?
If you only dropped me, I'll tell you. When Millie Dixon was trying to apply, she was told she had to do her resume, she was told there were gonna be interviews, and she was out of town with her mother, who was actually dying of cancer. She said she wouldn't be able to be here for that meeting, but you had the meeting anyways and other applicants were here. And then she was told that she wasn't here for the interview, so it was a tie vote. And then the mayor didn't want to break, break the tie, he said he wanted to interview her, get together.
I, I know, that's not true, I heard.
But because she needed to be interviewed, and I'm sorry, the council president did say that they were gonna be interviewed.
They were interviewed by the committee, by the committee.
But by council, it says by council. Who would even say that in ordinance? We wouldn't even say that in the ordinance.
Miss, I'm sorry, I apologize. Do you have any more questions on the Ashley...
Well, I would love to recruit her, but I can't because of the disparity of treatment.
I haven't addressed that.
I apologize too.
I actually can't, I like...
I have the, I have the, all the...
Excuse me, that's one, go ahead, go ahead, that's one.
I had asked Millie to come and join us, and volunteer some time.
She wanted to be...
She has never come to help, but Ashley has been at every meeting, probably for the last three months.
Let's not rehash everything that happened before.
Well, no, I think it's, it's relevant.
That's relevant.
If you want to talk about relevance, okay, we interviewed, this was a brand-new commission, so there was no recommendations from a commission. If you have a commission, if you don't have a commission, who's gonna recommend it? We had to choose them to start, to see it. After that, the commission decides who they want. We don't go and mandatory select planning, so they say, we would like to appoint these, and we say, yeah, that's who we can, that's who we want. So you don't interview every person that comes on, we didn't interview every appointment we've made this whole year!
We never had before, it's a...
It's a different situation completely.
Any more questions? Do you understand how we did it, people were in, how we did it, not to already do? All right, motion second, all favor? Opposed?
Sorry.
Okay, one objection. All right, we're gonna go down, we have a couple things, we have a little cleaning up. Alex had said the Water Authority is in the process of getting new meters and all, and they need a change in the minutes, we, the people, Steve, tell me if I'm right, what we did was, as we, not, excuse me, please...
Where's that on the agenda?
Excuse me, please, I'll bring you up by this, we, we appointed the people as we elected them, and they, they just want to see that reflected, which term, Steve, if I'm corrected right, you put the term next to each name as they came up, I think I was first, I got the first term, it's coming up this year, whatever, so all we're doing is, they would like to see that reflection in the minutes, they would just like the year that their term expires next to the name, right?
Yeah, and if I may, they is the bank...
The bank's here.
The financing for the meters.
They're rather, than we needed before that, so if anybody has a problem, if anybody remembers anything different, Steve, do you remember how the names were?
Yeah, it was, well, the first person appointed filled the last vacancy, so we just...
And they went by the vacancies, so all you wanna do is, is gonna reflect the year of the term next to the name, when they're going, when the term expires.
Yeah, I can provide documents, we have online.
Anybody have an objection to that?
No.
No, I don't think we, do you need a motion to clean that up, Mark, to put that in, add that?
I mean, I guess you would be amending the minutes.
I have a motion to amend the minutes, December 16th, to reflect the date next to each name of when their terms were...
I make a motion to amend the minutes from December 16th to reflect the Water Authority appointments to show that which term on the three members that were appointed.
Second?
Second.
Do we have questions? All favor? Opposed?
I actually have to recuse, because I was in the wrong council at that point.
Okay, Anne, you objected, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. We have, we see July 20th to 27th meeting, next one is August 3rd. Jenny, Duckwinkle?
Not a point of information, you went deferred business, you did the conditional use order for Dr. Ricardo, but we did not discuss that in PENDO, or...
We did, we said there was...
No, no, no.
We did discuss it, and that's...
No, no, you said there wasn't anything, but there is something to discuss, there is, so why, I don't understand why you skipped over that.
At this point in time, we're not ready for an update. Thank you, and that's...
No, me too, I'd like to, I think we need to make a motion.
Excuse me, we are down to the mayor updates, okay?
We need to have a motion to move forward with what we...
Yeah, we did that in separate sessions two days ago.
No, we didn't make a motion out of the public meeting, we said we were gonna discuss it, we were gonna...
We didn't have to, we were through council, so if you don't mind, we're going to go down to the mayor and council updates.
That means nothing's gonna happen.
It is happening, and it's executive session, thank you again.
Executive session is...
Jenny, can you give the duck over to Grace, please, someone?
I can, but we were gonna bring them in on August 3rd meeting, so we can present the checks.
Surprise.
There you go, next, we're going to order...
Can we, can we just, can I ask a question? Okay, I brought up that crosswalk, but you're telling me that it isn't really a crosswalk?
I'm saying it is a crosswalk, but maybe, Jack, did PENDO actually approve the crosswalk that we put in when this came up?
Yeah, we actually...
Yeah, I put it for you, one again, you asked for that, crosswalk?
I don't, I don't remember exactly who requested the crosswalk, but we went to PENDO about it when they were putting the ADA ramps in, and they actually approved it and installed the ADA ramps at that location.
So it is an official crosswalk?
Yeah, when was that date? Because I had met with them twice, and they, they said they would not approve a crossblock, mid-block crosswalk there because of the school, they didn't want kids going to be...
Well, that's not, that was not considered a mid-block because it was in an intersection.
So that was back...
It's maintained, your bank has been keeping it up?
Well, it hasn't been maintained, which is why I brought it, so could we, could we get that fixed up?
Put fresh paint on it?
Should be straight, I'll check it.
It's, yeah, it's very faded, and...
Actually, we're in the process now of updating our signal permits, because they've been out of, out of permit because they haven't been updated because it's budget cuts, so we're in the process of doing that now, so I'll make sure that that one gets put on the list, but that was a PENDO approved.
Can you give me the permit for that?
I can, I don't know if they issued a permit for it, or, because it's not a signal there.
When you get a chance, you'll pay them updated.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Blocker, do you want to come up and make your announcement, please? Main Street?
Evening, Councilman. My name is Steve Blocker, I'm the President's CEO of Main Street. Good news to report regards to our Armor Alley grant application to the state Department of Community Economic Development, who's a green lease, trails, and recreation grant application. We received word on Friday that we were awarded a grant for $108,000.
Good job, Steve, wonderful. And this is, and this is to clean up a park, a park, concrete, the concrete piece next to, uh, sure, it's...
Can you do me a favor, and, 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 can you explain how hard and how much work, and the process you went, the stay after that, to get that, and that's not just you write the paper, that's the work all in all, and you've been diligently fighting for it, Main Street, and the, on behalf of the borough, so, do you have to...
Yeah, just a, just a little brief history, actually, we started this project in 2014. If you remember the spence, the fence that was McDonald's property, it was the old green fence that went around the property, it was an old fence, but it was, it's the street between the property and the, we were able to take that fence down and put up the iron rail fence, and we're also put some lighting in the locker park, so that was phase one. And at the same time, in early 2015, we learned of this grant opportunity, we secure a grant, grant writer to help us with that, so we could grant the state, tons of paperwork, it's approximately a 114-page grant application, tons of documents, a result of that, myself at that time, President Adrian Martinez, several trips to Harrisburg, meeting with the different caucuses, because that is strictly a critical award, and we have to thank Senator Edmond and Representative Lewis, like, the best for us, highly competitive, everybody wants a piece of that, and again, they want the best for us, so a lot of work, trips to Harrisburg, meetings, and also we had to provide a $19,000 match in order to get that $108,000, so that was heavy duty fundraising the past two years to do that. So in all total, it's approximately a $130,000 project, and so 108 from the state and our match, and our, possibly, into that. So we're excited, it's going to, it's going to include, in addition, so new pavers, the old concrete, 1970s edition, it's gonna be two wrapped, pavers, landscaping, new flower beds, there's unsightly beds now that the bricks perform apart, they're starting to patch them up over the years, the last 40 years, they'll be taken out, and we'll also do canopy lighting, and we'll also, Tom, so we all have open-air concerts, festivals at that thing downtown. And in addition, something that we talked about, if you recall, we're gonna have a mid-block crosswalk to get from the municipal parking lot on the one side over to the locker park. If you remember, we got a road from Paul Rush from PENDO to put that in, as a city's criteria, it's not too close to the other intersection, so, so, yeah, so that is, so as part of it, that's exciting, as you know, trying to cross that street, that location's very, very dangerous. So all commence to play, the timeframe, this, this model will continue to work on permitting and design, we will, we're receiving a contract from the state shortly, work on quite a bit for the guidelines, so we're hoping to get the, it's out in the fall, and...
Maybe spring?
Maybe spring, and maybe... We're hoping in spring to have the project complete, so, so we're on it, but again, it's looking cooperation with the borough, because Borough Council hasn't been on board, you have to hand her back approval letters behind this whole project, because the state's looking for a partnership, and Main Street and the Borough Council, at least, most of Borough Council, we do have...
Steve, what, what, the reason I had to say that was, a lot of times, you know, people say, what is Main Street doing? What are they doing with that matched donation we made to them? And a lot of times, you know, Steve is doing stuff, you know, that seems working, that we don't know, and the same with you, it, it kind of fell off our radar, but it was always going to be, we just want to thank you very much for, for doing that for the borough, bringing in a hundred and some thousand dollar grant, and helping town better, thank you very much, thank you. Please thank all of Main Street Council, I'm sure you guys agree that...
Thank you, Steve, good job, Main Street.
Go to the orders, do you have any more good of the orders, Tom? Jeff, I'm sure you have something about the...
You're Summer Jam's here? Jeff Thomas is Summer Jam's here? Steve, what's the next date? Summer Jam.
So it's Summer Jam, ended last Friday in July, so July 29th.
Yep, July 29th, it was an incredible success, the first one in the new, in Kerr Park, and it's only gonna get bigger and better, because now we won't be trying to compete with St. Joe's, and it's gonna be even bigger, and it's great, it's very friendly.
Jeff, how many people can do that?
Oh, gosh, I mean, it's hard to get, it's hard to get a good metric.
Hundreds of thousands, just dozens?
No, we were, we were basing it on about six, with people going in now, 600, 600 people, and this is really cool, it's a summer festival, O-Gro's do this, Diet Town has eight acres of park space, we get to utilize that, give families downtown, Jeff, you did a great job, Steve did a good job.
Thank you. Phil, take it, take it. Everybody went, I know I went, I enjoyed it. All right, any more good updates, or...
Yes.
Or adding?
At the end of July, and I'm, of course, I left the email home, the wall at Hills, it is the Vietnam Vet Memorial Wall from Washington State, but it's a traveling one, it's going to be coming, the route will be going down...
Route 113.
Thanks, yeah, 113, and Pennsylvania, they're gonna be laying a wreath at the Veterans Memorial, and then they'll be going on to, I can't remember the park for anyone, or something.
Peace for anyone.
Peace for anyone, thanks, where they'll be for, for almost a week, for people to be able to go visit, so...
What date is that?
I don't, I don't know, so like, the last week of July, I don't remember.
Can you go back to...
I can go back to you, because I think it's something we should put on our website, and I'll link to it.
I believe it's July 27th.
Thank you.
That they'll be here.
Yes.
Yeah, and then they're gonna continue on, and they, they've sent out letters to people along the route, asking them to put out lights and stuff, and whatever, and then I have a question, which is, the, the next meetings are canceled, the next one until August 3rd, so...
Correct.
I don't understand, so what can possibly be happening about the billboard? Since we haven't appointed anyone, and we haven't taken any action, what can possibly be happening? Do these people just have to wait a whole other month before Borough Council does anything to help them?
Steve, I don't know how this falls in good of the order...
Well, I don't know where it went, because you didn't address it.
I made an exception for you, and I'll answer, Steve Salis is currently working on it, has been working on it.
Working on what, though? Working on what?
He's working on what we discussed in executive session, that's, as far as I'm gonna talk about it, and I'm not saying anything more about the executive session, okay?
Well, people are...
No more, Anne, no more executive session, do you have anything good for the...
I'm not talking about executive session.
That was executive session decision, and I really don't care to bring it, so would you like to...
Oh, it wasn't.
Do you have anything for the, it was, do you want to do the more...
No, no, it wasn't.